Welcome to the Weddington Town Council meeting, Monday, September 14th, 2020. I will open our meeting at seven o'clock and if we could get a flag on the screen, I will lead in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. In order to determine a quorum, because we are virtual, I will have to do a roll call. So I will go through and look for Councilwoman Ann Pruitt.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Probst.
Here.
Councilman Mike Smith.
Here.
Councilman Jeff Paramon.
Here.
Very good. We do have a quorum with all members present. The adoption of the agenda, I do think staff has one addition to the agenda. Am I correct?
Yes, staff requests to add to the consent agenda, call for a special meeting for a work session on Thursday, September 17th at nine AM at Weddington Town Hall.
Okay. Are there any other additions or deletions? If not, I will look for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Okay, and I will go through with a vote from Pruitt.
Aye.
Probst.
Aye.
Paramon.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Very good. We have adopted our agenda. Next, we have a presentation from the Union County Public Works Department. And I would like to welcome Mr. Hung Yi here from the Public Works Department, who will be providing us with this information tonight.
Well, thank you, members of Weddington Town Council. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you all today. And I'll do my best not to take up too much of your time. But I did want to take you through a few things that have an impact on the town. And so I put this together at the request of Ms. Thompson. And so without further ado, we'll just get going. If somebody, I don't think I'm in control of the slide. So if somebody wants to move on to the next slide. The purpose of what this is intended to do is just really give you an update on some projects that we have and activities that we have going on that impact the town. And so what I wanted to do is just give you a little bit of context on some of the things that we're seeing in Union County Public Works. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see, this is what we call the 12 Mile Sewer Service Basin. So 12 Mile wastewater treatment plant is down in Waxaw in the south. But everything in the green area drains into that wastewater treatment plant. All the red dots that you see on that map, including the ones in, and you can see the town of Weddington, a big portion of it is in the service basin for 12 Mile. The rest of it is in what we call the Six Mile Basin. But those red dots within the town are project requests or permit requests that the folks in my new development unit have received. Basically developers that want to build something, whether it's a new housing neighborhood or a commercial retail, just looking at the dots, I couldn't tell you what they are. And in terms of flow, you can see all the red dots. It's over a million gallons worth of sewer flow. And things that are not permitted yet, there's another 800,000 gallons. So all told, there's about 2 million gallons worth of sewer flow that people are wanting to build in that sewer basin. 2 million gallons is a lot. If it gives you, to give you some sense, the 12 Mile wastewater treatment plant is a seven and a half million gallons per day treatment plant. And what I've just shown you is 2 million gallons a day worth of additional flow. This won't happen overnight. It'll, some of them may never happen. But right now, we've got enough interest that people want to develop within Union County, especially the western part of Union County, including Weddington. So if you go to the next slide, I gotta get rid of this little bar because now I can see the header. Okay, there we go. One of the things that we are doing that is going to have an impact on the town, in fact, all the towns in Union County is we are working on our next Public Works master plan. It'll take about 18 months. And it takes us about, basically a preview of what the next 10 years looks like in terms of what our projects are going to be, what we're going to build in terms of infrastructure, where we think growth and development might happen. A lot of our work is built on the comprehensive plan that the planning department for the county does. The one thing that I will tell you is that we and our engineering staff, Brown and Caldwell is also the engineering firm that we're using, will be reaching out to all the towns, including Weddington, to sit down with you all to ask you the question, what do you need? What would you like to see happen in the town of Weddington in terms of water and sewer infrastructure? And so that'll be coming into your future. Is it, you know, in the next 60 days, 90 days, it's probably next year sometime? But it'll be in your future. And I hope that you, your staff, the town staff will be willing to sit down with us, our consultants, and really tell us what infrastructure you would like to see in the town. Next slide, please. The other thing, this will be a benefit to the residents in the town. As it is every Union County Public Works customer, is we are switching to what we call an advanced metering system. And so, you know, just like you, I don't know who you get your power from, but Duke Energy or Duke Power has an app that you can use on your phone. So when we put this advanced meter in, every water meter we have in the ground, our hope is to be able to start sending each customer up to date, you know, up to the minute, information about their water usage. Now, that is not something we can do right now. But, you know, this is an important project for us in terms of sort of keeping current with the technology. And so this is a 15 and a half million dollar capital project that is currently underway. So we've been doing, we've been, the meters that we are installing now are what we call census meters, which are equipped to do this advanced metering. We just have to put up the cell towers to capture the data and transmit it. And so that's happening right now. It'll take a couple of years to, you know, to change out 50,000 meters. But this is an important project for us. Next slide. The other things I will tell you, and this is, I guess I'd say, a benefit unique to Weddington and the folks in that pressure zone. On the water side, what you're seeing right now is the, the black line is the Mecklenburg County-Union County line. And the green lines are existing water lines. And you can see the Charlotte Water has an existing line that goes to the, basically the county line. Like Union County has lines that go close, but we're about 1,400 feet short of the county line. And so we are actually in the process of designing and installing that 1,400 feet of 16 inch transmission main. So basically, we're connecting our water system to Charlotte's water system. And here's why that's important. If for any reason, let's say the water plant in Lancaster County goes down or something should happen, we can actually isolate the pressure zone that you're in. And you see that 880 pressure zone. 880 is a reference to the altitude above sea level. So 880 feet is above sea level. And the 960 is, for Charlotte, is 960 feet above sea level. So they're at a higher elevation. But we can isolate the pressure zone that Weddington, Weddington is in. And if we have to, we can feed you water from Charlotte Water. So if, for what, you know, some natural disaster and emergency, whatever, there, the 880 pressure zone will have a backup water supply. And so we can get you another source of water. That is unique to the 880 pressure zone for us. It's also, there's also a smaller pressure zone than a 935 that we can do that with. And so those are two places where we are installing infrastructure to allow us to flow Charlotte Water into our system. And, you know, should we need it for whatever reason. It is not something we do every day. It's an emergency kind of situation. But if there's a water main break somewhere, a big one, and we're low on water, we can use Charlotte Water to help, you know, keep the pressure up. It is also a one-way valve. So Charlotte's at a higher elevation, which means they have more pressure, which means water will flow from 960 to 880, but we cannot push it uphill. So it is a one-way valve. So they can help us, but we can't help them. We are designing it. We're permitting it. And we are, you know, going to start construction towards the end of this year. Next slide. The other thing that I will tell you just broadly, and when it comes to water, is the Board of County Commissioners has approved all the plans and all the design and all the contracts and the necessary increases to fund the Yadkin Regional Water Supply Project. So if you, you may or may not be aware, but it is a water line from Lake Tillery up in Norwood in Stanley County. 26 miles of, you know, raw water, basically water from the lake that we're going to pump, 26 miles to New Salem in Union County, where it will go into our water plant, which will treat and clean the water. And then there's a 10-mile pipeline that connects from New Salem into Indian Trail. And along the way, we'll distribute the water. But, you know, basically, all of that is going to cost about $300 million to build. It will be operational in 2023, and we will have a second supply of water. I'm sure you're aware that over the summer, we had a lot of, you know, funny tasting water. And that was because of the algae buildup in the Lancaster Water Plant. This will give us a second source of water. So if that should happen, we can switch everyone to the Yadkin Water and give us time to correct any kind of issues at the other water plant. So it gives us redundancy that we currently don't have in the water system. And so we're really excited by possibility of, you know, providing everyone a second source of clean, safe drinking water. Next slide, please. I want to show you sort of the 12 Mile service area. And so here, we just finished expanding the sewer plant to seven and a half million gallons per day of treatment capacity. So it's down there where it says WRF. And Weddington is within that service area. And so I just wanted to show you the plant and the expansion that we did and sort of what it looks like. There's, you can see in the middle between the two treatment trains, there is room for a third. So there's still, we can still expand the treatment capacity in here till, I think, 12 MGD per day. So we have room to grow. And as the county develops, you know, we will develop this wastewater treatment plant accordingly. Next slide, please. The one project that is going through parts of Weddington is what we call the West Fork Interceptor. It's, it's basically, it's five miles of gravity sewer. And I happen to like calling it what the Monroe bypass of sewer lines. So all the sewer now travels on, in those green lines, what we call the East Fork Interceptor. And it takes a lot of flow. And as you can imagine, it gets quite congested. And so we need a second line. And we wanted, and you can see the actual placement of that line, the purple line, and where it would go. And you can see some of the areas falls at Weddington. And that's a pump station we have there, some of the things that would get diverted into that West Fork Interceptor. If you go to the next slide, it's a $13 million project. It's going to take about a year and a half to do. The project, unfortunately, it's delayed until the board gives us the approval to proceed, and they have not yet done that. And so it's something we want to do. And we are sort of, we're financed to do it. The designs are done. We're, you know, trying to get the easements necessary to do it. And we just need the board approval to proceed with the construction of the line. So that's, so it's an important project, but it is delayed. But it was worth mentioning, just to make you guys aware of it. The next slide. So this one, I don't know if you are aware, but the Union County Public Works actually has a program where we will do studies of town centers and look at the sewer development within the downtown area of any town that asks for it. We provide solutions for, you know, addressing wastewater services for towns. The towns that are eligible, you can see it on the slide, Mineral Springs, Stallings, Indian Trail, Weddington, and Fairview. And we identified those places as ideal for evaluating service options. And I think Mineral Springs took us up on it. We spent 100,000, I think, looking at downtown Mineral Springs. And we actually ended up doing a project in Mineral Springs based on that study. And no other town has asked us for it. And so, which makes me think, I'm really not sure if the towns are even aware that we have it. But all the, all a town has to do is ask us, hey, would you come to, say, Weddington and do a study on the sewer in downtown Weddington? And we will say, yes, of course, we'd love to do a study. And we will come down and, you know, talk to you about your sewer needs and do an evaluation of how best to make sewer work in the downtown area. And if projects are necessary, that will feed into our capital plan. And, you know, eventually we'll do the work. I think there's a next slide, but I think this, in terms of content, I think that might be it. I would, so I'll stop there and ask you if you have any questions. And, you know, if you need it, there's my contact information if you want to follow up later.
Okay, great. Thank you. Just one quick, back on the the interceptor, the West Fork Interceptor, why, why was that delayed? They, there was a lot of momentum kind of going with it, and there was a lot of movement. And, and I actually did speak with a resident a while back that said they haven't been out to do any, I guess there were surveyors and there were some folks out doing some, you know, looking at the land and the trees and the, you know, the direction that this line was going to go. And there hasn't been much, what caused the delay, out of curiosity?
It is the Board of County Commissioners haven't, they have not been ready to pull the trigger on doing the project.
So that, so it was kind of approved and then halted? Or it was just, it was set motion and then they just haven't reapproved?
Yes, they, you know, they really, you know, rather than condemn property, they really wanted to give the people, you know, get people to buy into the project. And so one part of it is, you know, we're still working with our attorneys.
Right.
To negotiate easement rights.
I got you.
Because sewer, sewer, water is easier than sewer because water follows usually the right of way along the road. Sewers.
Right.
More challenging because we're following the lowest, you know, point of elevation in a general area. So usually, we're following a stream, and streams go through people's backyards. And they're never in a straight line. And so.
And what, and sometimes that's, there's a big difference when you say a water's going to come through your backyard versus sewer's going to come through your backyard.
Yeah, no one really wants a sewer main through their backyard.
Right, yeah. Okay, thank you. I was just interested in knowing that. I, I don't know if council has any questions. I would probably say that I can speak for a couple of folks on council anyway that would say, we would love for you to come do a study of downtown. I think that would.
You can ask that question, you can ask that question now. Paul was.
Well, I, well, I know, I'm just saying, I, I mean, I'll, I'll open the floor to council. But I, I think it's probably fair to say that, that, that seems to have been kind of a hiccup in why our downtown hasn't seemed to take off at all because of our lack of sewer. So, you know, I'll open the floor to council and let them give their two cents and ask any questions. Councilman Smith, I'll let you start.
I don't have any questions now, but I certainly would be in favor of a survey.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. There we are. You're, unmute yourself.
Sorry. I said, I think we discussed that at the retreat. And yes, I definitely would like for the county to come do a survey of our downtown and help us find a solution to get sewer to our downtown. You know, there's a, there's a private sewer in our downtown area currently because there is no sewer. And our only shopping center is on that private sewer system. So I'm sure all of the people that use that private sewer system would appreciate public sewer.
Absolutely. Councilman Paramon.
Well, again, I appreciate you coming and giving the presentation. That was a lot of great information. And I too would welcome the county coming and doing that study for downtown.
I think it'd be great. All right, Pruitt, do you have anything you want to add?
Don't I just, I'll agree with everybody. And thank you so much for, for coming tonight and explaining all that. That was wonderful information. Thank you.
Very good. So I think that we have a consensus. I think, you know, all in all, again, our little downtown has, has, has struggled kind of with growth. And I think one of the, the main causes of it, in talking with the folks that own the, the private septic, is there's just no sewer. So I think that would be great. And I certainly look forward to the opportunity for the town to sit down with your group at Public Works to continue any conversation on, on the needs that we have in, in Weddington.
Okay, so I'm going to, even if you don't send us a formal letter or anything, I'll talk to the county manager, make sure he's okay with it. But I'll work with Ms. Thompson to sort of get it rolling and see, you know, sort of scope out what you want done and everything else that needs doing. But that's, if, you know, I realize that's very general, but if you can just leave it at that, we'll, you know, we'll take care of it.
That's a start. We gotta, we, you gotta have somewhere to start. So that's, that's fantastic. We'll let you and Lisa work on that, and she will keep us updated.
Okay, I appreciate it. Well, thank you for your time. And again, whether, you know, my contact information is at the end. You know, Ms. Thompson also has been very easy and pleasant to work with. So if you got any questions or need anything from Union County Public Works, I'll do my best to provide it. So just reach.
Be careful what you ask for. Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All righty, moving on to our council member reports. I will open up the floor to Mr. Paramon. Do you have?
Yes, I guess the first report I'll give is on the inaugural meeting of the Western Union Municipal Alliance, which we had back about three weeks ago. It went very well. The group elected myself as the chairman and Amanda Fuller.
Congratulations.
Fuller from Indian Trail as the, as the vice. And so our next meeting is going to be held on Thursday, the 24th, at Weddington Town Hall at 3:30. So anybody that would like to join, like last time, we'll, we'll have some seats available there. And also Karen had us on a Zoom as well, so she was broadcasting it as the meeting was going. So we're currently working on just a couple of things initially. The, how to work with the county on their Union 2050 plan and try to communicate to the Board of County Commissioners what we in the western part of the county would like to see as far as our spheres of influence and the zoning that would be attached with that. And so we're, we've got some, some work to do, but we're excited about it.
Right. Very good. That's awesome. Congratulations. It's well deserved. And I, I'm thrilled that you're going to be, you're going to be super involved. That's great. Ms. Pruitt. You're muted. Nothing.
And I was going to say, I don't really have anything to talk about this one.
Well, that's okay. You know, you, when you kind of piggyback on probably everything that Jeff has to say since, because she is the, the alternate, so that's fine. Probst, do you have anything?
I don't have anything that's, except for Saturday is our shredding event. And if there's any council members that want to come help Saturday, it's from noon till three. We're going to have a drop, basically trying to get it so the residents can just drive up and drop off their paper that they want shredded. And we're trying to get a few volunteers. But if there's some adults that would like to help the kids as well as the adults, we'd appreciate some extra help, again, noon to three. And it's sponsored by Truliner.
Extra muscles.
Yeah, extra muscles.
Need the muscles to pick up the boxes. Very good. Mr. Smith?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. I, I do have one thing I would like to share. I received an email la, the end of last week from Chief McLendon from the Wesley Chapel Fire Department. And I asked him if he minded if I shared it on the meeting. I think it's great news, and I think our residents would, would like to notice. So it was addressed to the mayors and the mayor pro temps of Weddington Village of Marvin and Village of Wesley Chapel. And I'm just going to read what his email said. "I am proud to announce that Wesley Chapel Fire Department has received a second grant award this year. This grant is through FEMA and focuses on recruitment and retention programs. The grant has been awarded in the amount of $332,500 through the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Program. The grant is funded on a four-year performance period. Recruitment and retention is something that all organizations face. Fire departments nationwide continue to see declines in overall volunteerism. And attracting and retaining qualified firefighters continues to be a mission critical goal and top priority in our organization. With this in mind, I applied for this grant and with a laser focus of enhancing our current programs and creating new programs for our most valuable asset, the brave men and women who proudly serve our communities as emergency responders. This grant was written to enhance current programs and also create new programs which are designed to both attract new firefighters as well as create programs with, which will long, sorry, which will aid long-term retention. At the present time, Wesley Chapel Fire Department has over 130 members, and we hope to grow that number to 165 or greater during the grant period. Below, I have summarized the programs we will be enhancing in the new programs that were included in the grant award. So the current programs that they will be enhancing is recruitment video and advertising, five additional sets of personal protective equipment per year, five, funding for five additional NFPA, physicals for new firefighters. And the new programs that this money is going to be used for is for certification bonuses, training bonuses, top volunteer responder bonuses, and college tuition and scholarship programs." And he just mentioned, please feel free to forward this information to members of your council. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me respectfully, Stephen McLendon. So I just thought that, that's kind of neat that, that, you know, he's really doing everything he can to, to file for grants and to apply for these grants. And $332,500 is, is, is a nice bit of money over a four-year period. So I would like to congratulate Chief McLendon on his willingness to work to earn this grant, and congratulations for, for earning it. So that's all I have. If anybody would like to make a comment, fine. If not, we will move on. To public comments. Karen Dewey, do you have any public comments that came in?
I did not receive any public comments.
Okay. There's nobody here that wants to give a public comment. Building is empty. Safety report. Deputy Crop.
Yes, ma'am. My name's Deputy Crop. I work for the Union County Sheriff's Office assigned to the town of Weddington. I know that something we've been hearing a lot about in the news in the last several weeks is we've had a lot of break-ins on this side of the county into vehicles and things like that. They're actively being investigated. They do have some suspects in mind, you know, as far as some stuff that was put out on Facebook, social media, about one individual being charged with some, some thefts that occurred on this side of the county. We're just encouraging the residents to make sure that they're securing their vehicles because the majority of these break-ins that occurred are on unlocked cars. And, you know, they're just walking up the driveway, checking door handles, and then leaving the area. So we are just concerned, as we've seen that a few times, they've actually used car, garage door openers to entrance people. we are just concerned as we've seen that a few times they've actually used car, garage door openers to enter people's garages. So want to make sure that people are securing their vehicles and keeping themselves as safe as possible, you know, even if, if you have a child, make sure they're locking their vehicles as well, especially if they have a garage door opener in the vehicle. We're still getting some complaints about some traffic on Providence Road. So we're planning a little saturation in the coming weeks. And we had some other complaints on Weddington Church Road about some speeding vehicles and we're addressing that as those complaints are coming in. So that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. I'll make sure I stay off Providence Road next week. Okay. I lost some of you. Consent agenda. Lisa, we have several items. So Lisa, I will give you the four and let you go over each of these items for clarity.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 9A is a proclamation recognizing September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Item 9B is a proclamation recognizing October 4th through the 10th as Fire Prevention Week. And item 9C is a third proclamation recognizing October as Domestic Abuse Awareness Month. Item 9D is a budget amendment. This was to show revenues and expenditures due to the CARES Act. We received $18,220 as part of that grant. So we, we have to show that as money coming in and going out. Item 9E, we are calling for a public hearing to be held October 12th at 7:00 PM here at Weddington Town Hall. This is for Christ South Lutheran Church for a conditional zoning amendment for their Phase One plans. We did receive some concerns from some adjacent property owners about the food truck area and amphitheater area. But after tonight, we will send out a public notice notifying those adjacent property owners of the public hearing and then we hope to set up a meeting with them to address those concerns before our October meeting. Item 9F is a resolution to request DOT to accept the Bromley subdivision roads. If you guys remember, this was on our agenda last month. We wanted to make sure that the residents and the HOA were aware that NC DOT is not accepting Fernhurst Terrace and Pond Mead Lane due to that timber bridge instead of their typical culvert design. I did reach out to the HOA president. He is aware they're actually in the process of getting some cost estimates for road maintenance and for the cost of, to replace that bridge. They hope to have that in the next week or so. And then there is a plat. This was a concern back in 2013 when it was approved by the council back then. So there's a, there's a note on the plat that says that the HOA is responsible for the maintenance of that bridge and those roads in perpetuity. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. There are no questions from council. I don't have any council questions. I'm not hearing anything. I can't see.
I have a quick question regarding, regarding F. Is the HOA looking to get quotes to replace the bridge so that it could be accepted by DOT? Or is that something that they're just gonna transition over to the homeowners?
As far as I know, it's to replace the timber bridge in the future and continue, continue maintenance of those, of at least that section. If the Dow property to the south ever is, is developed, DOT could have access through that property and possibly maintain the cul-de-sac. But right now, they won't, they won't cross the bridge off of Bromley. So I, I believe it's for to maintain and replace the timber bridge.
Okay. Thank you.
That's, that was a great question, Ann. And I was kind of wondering the same. Lisa, just to, just to follow up real quick, you may or may not know the answer. If they did replace it, has DOT, would DOT consider? If they went through and, and got it to the, the requirements that DOT wanted, would DOT consider taking it? Or has that even been discussed?
Yeah, as long as NC DOT has a cul-de-sac turnaround area for maintenance, if it's brought up to their standard, they typically do and will.
Okay. All right.
And those, those, bringing it to those standards, that would be something that the Bromley subdivision, their HOA is responsible for, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. If there are no more questions, I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
All in favor. Pruitt.
Aye.
Probst?
Aye.
Harriman?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, next we have the approval of our August the 10th, 2020 regular town council meeting minutes. Are there any changes? If not, I will look for a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
All in favor. Pruitt.
Aye.
Probst?
Aye.
Harriman?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Moving on, we do not have any old business. Moving on to item 12, new business. 12A, discussion and consideration of renewal of an annexation agreement with the Village of Marvin. Lisa, I will turn this over to you.
The town entered into an annexation agreement back in 2000 with the Village of Marvin. It was landed in May of 2001. So tonight, I'm, I'm seeking whether you all want to reconsider this agreement. It was for 20 years, which will expire this December. I, I do see that we need to update the map with the, the current town limits. In Marvin as well, their, their area, their jurisdiction kind of follows Waxall Marvin Road over onto Newtown and that new Publix. So that's all Marvin. And then we have the annexation over along Potter and Beulah Church, Waxall Indian Trail. So the map does need to be updated, but seeking whether you guys would like to renew the annexation agreement and staff would then proceed with getting the public notices out that are required for statute.
Okay. All right, very good. I will open up the floor for questions and discussion and let council work through whether this is something they want to do. So I'll just open up the floor.
Lisa, just for clarification, it's to, so they don't encroach on other towns' property? Is, is that correct?
Right. It's hard to see. I don't know if you can see the light yellow. It's where Longview currently is off of Tom Shore. This would be our area. And then the light blue is Marvin's annexation area. Correct. We wouldn't, we wouldn't go into this light blue area.
It's basically just like a city, a sphere of influence, kind of?
Yeah. So the concern back, you know, 20 years ago was the towns had the power to do involuntary annexation. So we had the city of Charlotte, you know, coming down south. We had Waxall going up north. I think we were either in the process of doing our involuntary annexation, the big one we did right around this time. We were in the process of that. And I, I think Marvin came right after and tried to annex this light blue area around Crane Road. So now that the involuntary annexation process has changed, where towns can no longer do that. It's not as necessary, but I do think it's good to have these sort of boundaries, especially with what you and Jeff are working on with the Western Union County Municipal Alliance and talking about.
Right.
If a rezoning comes in, who has authority?
Well, just like Lisa said, and I had, I know I spoke to her a little bit earlier about this. When this was initially done, you know, the, the towns did have involuntary annexation powers. And even though we don't have that now, I mean, I think it's, it's exactly what we're kind of looking at as far as the type of agreement between the towns in this part of the county about where we would see future annexations happen. So, I mean, if Marvin's good with it, and as long as we get the current town boundaries adjusted, I mean, I saw, I see no reason not to go forward with it. But again, that's, that's just my two cents on it.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I agree, Jeff.
Okay. Well, it sounds like everybody's in consensus and I just, if, if nobody has any questions or want to kind of have a discussion anymore, we'll go on with the vote.
Sounds good.
Okay. We need a, a vote, just consensus to, to move forward. I'll work with Marvin's planner to get the maps updated and I'll send them out to y'all. And then we can start the public hearing process.
So we're, so do, do you need an official motion and vote? Or do you just need directions to, to, to go on with, with, move on with the process?
Yep, consensus to move on.
Okay. So I think you have council consensus to move forward with the renewal agreement with the town of Mar, Village Marvin.
Do you need a formal roll call in that, Lisa?
No. Look, Lisa, you do not need a vote. I don't think she, I think she said she just needed to confirm, confirmation. Okay, moving on. Uh, new business B, discussion and consideration to extend and permanently adjust all current planning board terms from December to expiration year to March the following year. Lisa, do you just want to give a brief background?
We discussed this back at the retreat, how we had issues with new council members coming on in the holidays and how tough it is with the, the December expiration. So this vote tonight will make all the terms expire in March. And then at the retreat, Karen Dewey has put together kind of a process of how we're going to handle new appointments in a timeline that we'll talk about on Thursday.
Okay.
Sounds great.
Yes.
Okay, so do we need a formal vote for this? Or do we need to just give direction?
Formal vote, please.
Okay, so I will look for a motion to approve new planning board terms and procedures.
So moved.
All in favor? Pruitt. I didn't hear Pruitt's.
Aye.
Okay, sorry, I couldn't, it was, it was staticky. I want to make, I can't see your hand. I can't see anybody. Okay, Probst?
Aye.
Harriman?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Okay, very good. So we will work through that and that'll be good. That will make a little less stress on staff and council come planning, come, come December and planning board appointments. Update, item 13, Lisa, do you have an update for us?
I do not.
Okay. Code enforcement. Are there any questions or comments on our code enforcement report? Okay, I, I did ask Lisa about one. And, and I would like to find out and follow up with Sam on the one at 3343 Ironwood. They were ordered to remove the veh, from this vehicle in March. It appears that the homeowners aren't the owners of the vehicle yet. It's still sitting there. So I've asked to get a follow-up and see what we can do to, to get that out of there.
Yep, they will require us to send it to the vehicle owner, not the property owner. It was the intent to tow. So I think they have until tomorrow. So hopefully we can get some action on that soon.
Do the, do the property owners know the, do the property owners know who the vehicle owners are?
I don't know.
How do you have a car parked in front of your house for six months and not know who it is? Okay, all right. I don't have anything else. I just, that, that was a concern. Does anybody have any questions? If not, we will, we will look to Leslie.
Yes. Yeah, you've got your monthly financials in the packet. I did just want to let you know that we are in the process of undergoing our fiscal year 20 audit. Our auditor has been out twice so far. She's pretty much finished with build work. We should anticipate having it wrapped up probably by the end of October. We'll have to submit our reports to the LGC and once we get them back, we'll, we'll get them on the agenda to have her present them to you.
Okay. Very good. Does anybody have any questions for Leslie? Nope. Okay. Transportation. All right, not a whole, not a whole lot. As everybody still can assume, we, DOT is still having tremendous financial woes. The COVID-19 has had a devastating impact on revenues for the state. We had our Union County CRTPO quarterly meeting today and Bjorn Hansen listed off probably 10 to 15 STIP projects, which are State Transportation Improvement Program projects that have been delayed. That's 10 to 15 in the Union County area. Two in particular that affect Weddington is the Highway 16 in Providence Road project, which now has an estimated completion date of 2030. And the railroad extension has a completion date that has been pushed out to around 2032. So it's, that's unfortunate. It's just, it's been kind of a, it's just been real difficult for DOT. So unfortunately, that's just how it goes. On the bright side of things, the roundabout at Chestnut, well, it was scheduled to open in the next day or so. The developer had some utility issues and that opening has been pushed out closer to the end of September. But in light of things, that's, that's only a couple of weeks away. I'm tired of driving to Matthews around, around Dilly Morris. I go to Matthews. You know, my kids and stuff have, have stuff in Matthews. So I will be glad when that roundabout opens. But hang in there, folks, a couple more weeks. As soon as we get a definitive date, staff will post it. But as of right now, it is closer to the end of September. So that is all I have for transportation. We are now scheduled to go into a closed session pursuant to NCGS 143 dash 318 point 11A3 to consult with an attorney to protect the attorney-client privilege. So I will look for a motion to move into closed session. All in favor? Pruitt?
Aye.
Probst?
Aye.
Harriman?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
All right, thank you. I think we plan on pausing this meeting and we will come back, come to adjourn.
Yep, everyone will, you can mute your mics and then turn off your screens if you'd like your video and we'll be back.